Good morning. We'll start on time. Welcome to the 11th Annual Summer Forum. Doesn't seem that long ago, but it has been. This morning's meeting is being recorded by Nantucket Community Television and will be aired on Comcast Channel 18, as well as streamed on their website in the On Demand section. We thank them for doing it, and we also note that they ran it throughout the year. So we're very happy that they continued this year as well. I am David Brown, President of the Nantucket Community Association. On behalf of NCA and its Board of Directors, we appreciate the willingness of the members of the Select Board and the Town Manager to once again meet with us in this format, as we have done for the past 10 years. NCA was formed in 1995 to participate in the discussion and resolution of issues for the future of this island. NCA is an organization of full-time and seasonal residents both, and is a private nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. Two of our major focuses remain, we'd like to see them moved off the list, but remain tick-borne diseases and the water quality of our harbors and ponds. We have placed a contact sheet on your chair, and I think a sign-up thing is passing around. If you don't get either a fundraising letter from us or if you're unfamiliar with this, sign up and we will add you to our mailing list and keep you informed. Today, we are here not to talk about NCA, but to talk with the Select Board members and the Town Manager and have them, after talking briefly to us, answer questions and comments from you. The process will be that I will now introduce the table. And in the middle is the Chair of the Select Board, and that for some of you used to be called the Board of Select Men, but in today's world, it's the Select Board. And Jason Bridges is the Chairman. Don Hillgate is the Vice Chairman, former Chairman. And we have Rita Higgins. And we have Matt Fee, as you can read. And at the end, our Town Manager, Libby Gibson. We ask each to talk briefly, roughly five minutes. We have our veteran timekeeper, Bruce Hopper, right here in the front row. And after that, we will turn to you. And the last hour plus will be from you to them. And we will have, at that point, one person will pass a microphone. They only have two portables. One will have to stay up there, and one will be passed among you. And please, in terms of asking questions, do not ask it until you have the microphone, so that everyone can hear the question. With that, I turn to the stage.
Thank you all for coming today. Walking into this building, I looked at Mike Burns and said, "How lucky are we to have Atheneum?" So thanks for having me for hosting this. It's one of my favorite spots on the island, if not downtown. Okay, so I have five minutes to talk about whatever I want? Great. So I've been asked to talk about the strategic plan that we've been working on for the last year. We did a presentation one or two meetings ago, maybe about 20, 30 minutes, and we all talked about different sections of it, and how it all came about, where we are today. Jim Kelly's not here, one of our Select Board members. It was pretty much his vision. He really, really pushed for this board to have a strategic plan. There are major challenges with that. Every year, well, except this last year, normally there's a new board. There's two new members, there's another member, and it changes a lot. So many things are coming at us, small and big, all the time. How do we have a strategic plan to look at the most important things that affect the most people? And so after, I want to say three or four months, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong in any of these dates, after getting together with Town Administration, with Libby, with Greg, with some of the department heads, talking about how do we focus ourselves? What areas? Do we talk about mental health? Do we talk about housing? And it was very difficult to choose what, for the next three years, what are we going to focus on? And so it was housing, transportation, and the environment. Those were the three sections, three areas, that we felt touch everybody here, whether you're here for the weekend, you're a summer resident, you're here year-round, you've lived here for 50 years or five hours. Those three things touch everybody, no matter what. And so that's where our focus is going to be. It doesn't mean that we're not going to talk about marijuana regulations or drainage on a certain road or other policy things that come up. But these are the three areas that we're not going to lose focus on, if that makes any sense. We got a lot of, not pushback, but questions in the beginning. "Oh, are you not going to talk about the senior center feasibility plan?" Or other things that people are really interested, that they feel we need on this island or need to be fixed or improved. And the answer is, we are still going to look at those things. We're not going to lose focus on those three areas. Within those three areas, we have goals, two or three goals in each one that are trying to be attainable, to be able to accomplish them in a three-year time limit. And that was hard for us in the beginning. So we had all these lofty goals, and we had to come back like, "Wait, Matt, can we get that done in five years? Hmm, I don't know, that's a 10 years." And so we had to really pull this down into a three-year plan connected to our vision of the housing, transportation, environment. I could go over each individual goal. I was just trying to pick a couple out, and if there's any questions later. But in the environment, one of the big things that came up was the landfill, the contract we have, the waste options. That ends, I believe, in 2025? So we have seven years to figure that out. Seven years? You've got all the time in the world, right? Definitely not. Are we going to change the technology? Are we going to ship everything off-island? Are we going to keep it as-is? It's a lot of things to think about, plus the contract with a vendor. So that's one of our main goals. But before that, and you can sneak in this later if you want, Rita, we were going down the path of having a sustainability office. It's a very common department to have, or a sub-department of, say, planning or town administration, to have a sustainability director and staff to think about recycling, reuse, have those outreach programs to look at the landfill and water quality and everything. And we thought that would just be more of an action item of our environment, of our goals. So I'm getting into the weeds here, so I'd rather leave it up, look for questions. The strategic plan was really interesting. The side benefit, it made us talk about how we make our meetings more effective. You know, how do we not talk about a restaurant? Can it be open until 10:00 or 10:30? And talk about that for 60 minutes on a Wednesday night. It is important to the homeowners and the butters and people who are there, but we should be talking about meatier things, right? So we're trying to not diminish those smaller things that come in. We're trying to be more efficient, so we can have an hour conversation about really big, important issues. Is that, do I have a dean coming up? I have 30 seconds, where are we? Is there a horn? I'm done, okay, great. So I'm really impressed with this board. I've got to know them a lot this last year, sitting in a room and talking about vision and going back and forth and disagreeing. We had an executive session meeting this past Thursday, and at the very end of it, I said, "I know you guys are going to think this is cheesy, but I really enjoy arguing with you guys." And we do, we do disagree. People think Rita and I are a voting bloc, because we spend a lot of time together. I disagree with her more than any other Select Board member, but it's done in a sense of respect, and then we can go out and have coffee later. It's really nice to be able to share ideas and disagree, and then come to a solution. Even, I think I said, even when I don't get my way, I still enjoy talking to you guys. So I really enjoy being on this board and working with Town Administration and all the departments. Okay, that's it. What's up? Don's up next.
Good morning. Just to add to what Jason just said, the strategic planning process was really, really wonderful in the fact that we got to spend a lot of time really sitting in a room together, hashing things out, and finding common ground, which I just found incredibly valuable. And we've had a really great opportunity here to have the continuity of having the same five members for two years and having been through that strategic planning process. I was asked to talk about housing this morning. Housing was across the board the number one of the three goals in terms of our recognition of what a big hurdle it is for us as a community. And it's something that touches all of us because we need a workforce here to provide all of the services that our island needs. And it's a big quality of life issue, too. So in our strategic plan, we chose three housing goals. The first goal was to try to create 24 new units per year that would be added to our subsidized housing inventory list. That's for 80% area median income families. And it is important because the state mandates that we have 10% of Chi eligible units, and we're only at about 2.5 right now. And we... Sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. And we have a few projects underway that could easily get us to this, but we have to maintain our focus. The 24 units also gets us to what's called a safe harbor, that gives us a year's reprieve from an unfriendly 40B and gives us more community choice in terms of how we create these units, where they go, what they look like, so forth. Our second goal was to really analyze and address and finalize a plan for how we can meet our own employee housing needs as a town. We're finding more and more pressure in this area to attract and retain valuable staff. Goal number three is to further analyze across all income levels from under 30% of area median income up to 200%, and really, really identify beyond the Chi units that were required to create what other types of units we need as a community. We often hear people who just barely miss the 150%, which is what qualifies you to buy a covenant home under our program, which I'm happy to answer questions about. So we really, we need to look up to the 200, and we really need to recognize the people who are in the under 30 as well. There's not a lot being created to manage that. So then, also an update on some things that have come to fruition and things that are in the works. Saichem's Path was a town subsidized 40B. It's on Surfside Road. That is almost at completion. Forty year-round families at either 80%, 100%, or 150% area median income are occupying those. I think it's something that the town really can be proud of. And there were also three Habitat for Humanity homes created in there. We have a town, another town project at Six Fairgrounds Road. In 2004, when we purchased the electric company land, we slated some of that for housing. And it's been re-voted at a number of town meetings over the years. We moved forward with an RFP and awarded it. These will be 64 rental units. They are 80% restricted and 100% restricted to year-round occupancy. And they serve needs from under the 30% up to 120%, and then a handful of market rate units, but again, restricted to year-round occupancy, which is a very important piece. And we need to continue to do these town-approved projects to keep ourselves safe from unfriendly 40Bs and choose where we want things to go. Now, there are some neighbors that are concerned about this, and there is an appeal filed, which has unfortunately held us up in terms of qualifying for our safe harbor. But hopefully, we can work through that and alleviate their concerns. Then, the elephant in the room is we do have an unfriendly 40B proposal before us now. I'm sure you've seen some signs around town. And it's just, it's a good example of an unfriendly 40B. There's a lot of concerns. It would add 39 units to our Chi list, but it creates 117 market rate units. Immense pressure on its location. It's too dense. There's extreme neighborhood and island-wide concern. And that's working through the zoning board process. I'm almost done. I just have a couple of more things I want to touch on. We passed a housing bank bill at town meeting, twice, actually. It's a home rule petition up at the state. This would be a tax that would fund our Affordable Housing Trust Fund and help us further our housing efforts. And it is at the doorstep of the Speaker of the House. So we're really hopeful and optimistic that that will go forward. And the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has been working on some strategic planning of their own with a consultant named Judy Barrett, who did our housing production plan. Richmond is another project that's been moving forward. They were able to do this all under local zoning provisions that the planning department helped create. And that would, once developed, get us actually to 8% of our 10% that we need for the Chi. That's a number of apartments that all count. And there's a total of 242 Chi eligible units, as well as six homes will be created at the 175%, which, like I said, is another important island need. Habitat for Humanity continues to do great work. They're developing a couple units on Wade Drive right now, which is another portion of the town-owned parcel. And that's what I have. I look forward to more questions about housing. Thanks.
All right, so the water quality update. First, one of the things I hear often is, "How can I learn more, find out more, get involved?" So I did want to point out that this week is a big week for water quality events. Wednesday, we have Coastal Resiliency Workshop. It's the second of our Coastal Resiliency Workshops. It's at 6:00 PM at the police station for Fairgrounds. And the reason we've had two workshops is to engage as wide a demographic as possible. We had one back in May, but we're very aware that this is something that is going to impact everyone. And we really wanted to engage and get feedback from both seasonal and year-round residents. So that's Wednesday at 6:00. Thursday, the Land Council's having their second annual State of the Harbor Forum. And this is an excellent opportunity to find out more about water quality, the results of water quality testing, eel grass health, and the sewer projects. And then Monday, the 23rd, we've got the Great Ponds Forum, where we're putting out our draft Pond Management Principles. So these are all opportunities to really learn more about the details of some of the projects that are ongoing at the moment. And we would love for you to attend. I didn't see anyone writing down those dates and times, but I'm sure you're remembering them. So one of the things that was, I think, was very remarkable, and it came through the process of the strategic plan, was water quality becoming one of our two environment goals. And this was really a result of it wanting to acknowledge the current and ongoing work that we have, as well as really taking the opportunity to make water quality and the expansion of some of these projects, turning it into an integral part of the town's decision-making processes and policies, and really having the opportunity to codify ongoing water quality management. And this was something, the environment is a priority, I think was very significant and is something that hadn't been sort of verbalized and really put out there as a priority. So this was key for making sure that water quality maintains, continues to be a priority. So in terms of an update, the results of the annual water quality testing, you can get the detailed information on that in the Board of Selectman basket from May 9. And then you can go to the State of the Harbor to find out the details on that. Overall, we're doing better. There are still areas of the harbor that we're not meeting, our TMDLs or the nutrient loading that we're meant to be. But overall, the work that the town has done, the fertilizer regulations with Land Council have been having an impact. A year ago, the Board of Health enacted well-testing regulations. So if you have a well, you have to get them tested every three years. And this is not, it's not impossible. It's not necessarily easy, because the samples have to get to the Board of Health by Tuesday morning before 9:15 and tested within six hours. But despite that, we have 278 samples, which at this point gives us the opportunity to start creating data sets where we can understand what is going on with the well. So if you are on a well, it would be great if you could hand in your samples. We are developing Pond Management Principles. We are expanding the fertilizer regulations to gardeners as well as landscapers. We are developing a stormwater management plan. Stormwater management has been one of the sort of missing pieces in the big picture of water quality, particularly water going to the harbors, and is something with the thanks of our new DPW Director, we've been able to really, as well as the Land Council, we've been able to start to look at. And we anticipate that we'll have some important information in how we manage our stormwater and our water quality. The Department of Natural Resources is very excited that they are teaming with MIT to create a web-based platform where all of this water quality information will not only be available to the public, but it will be engaging and exciting. And you don't have to be a scientist to read it or understand it. So that will be, that's in test phase, but hopefully, they'll be rolling out that soon so that we can all regularly keep an eye on what's going on. The sewer update from January 4th. I think one of the big things for everyone to know is that there have been no long-term impacts on the quality of the water in the harbor from this event. And it did give us an opportunity to assess any other points of vulnerability on that sewer line, and we're able to repair those and get all the work done by June. So that's sort of the silver lining and the good news as a result of that. Then, some other ones that are maybe not directly related to water quality, but very important, is that our town water is owned by the state, and they issue us 20-year permits. And those permits tell us how much water we can draw out of the aquifer. And they're looking at rainfall data, and they're looking at recharge rates, and they're taking all these sort of scientific, all this data, and then deciding how much we're allowed to pull. So that permit is up for renewal, and our water department is working with the state to increase the amount of water that we can pull. We're looking for a 15% increase. Currently, they would like to give us 5%. But just to note that last year, we pulled at 102%. And to tie this back to the sewer, what I do want to mention is that for the 48 hours or so that we had to request everyone in the town to reduce their water usage to allow us to address the January 4th break, there was a significant reduction in the amount of water being used by the community. The community really pulled together. But what was interesting is that reduction was ongoing. It didn't just end once everything was back on track. So it really highlighted to me the sort of the ability for all of us to be a little bit more thrifty with our water usage. And as we look at renewing these permits, it's something to keep in mind. We've got our Coastal Resiliency Plan, as I mentioned before. So this is really working with consultants to come up with what might be the first layer of a much larger plan, but looking at the impacts, opportunities, and the approach Nantucket will take in light of climate change, sea level rise, and erosion. And again, this is something that will impact all of us. So any feedback that you have or opportunity to be a part of that plan on Wednesday would be fantastic. And last, but not least, you may notice you are seeing fewer plastic straws on Nantucket. We have launched a Stop the Straw campaign. And this is really in light of a much bigger push towards reducing plastic in the oceans. So Nantucket, in collaboration with Remain and Ryan Mitchell, has launched the Stop the Straw, where we're requesting businesses that would supply straws to first and foremost only give them out when requested. So don't ask for a straw, or say no to the straw when you place your order. And secondly, replace them preferably with paper, because paper straws will decompose, whether they end up on the side of the road or in the ocean. And if not paper, then compostable. And compostable, again, if they don't make it into the landfill, then they behave the same way as a plastic straw, which is why we're pushing for the paper straw. But because we do have a biodigester and can process the compostable straws, compostable is better than plastic. So that's it for water quality.
Hi. It's going to be a little hard to follow these guys. I've been working hard for two weeks, and I'm not quite prepared. So I wasn't sure this morning what I was going to talk about. I was in the bakery this morning, 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, and the second batch of bread of Portuguese is like 240 loaves at a time. And the second batch didn't have any yeast in it, and the third batch didn't have any yeast in it. And, you know, and so what we try to do is we try to prepare. We make everything the day before, and we get everything ready. And, you know, and then we do, you know, because we're going to have a busy day, and then we do it. And so then we have to scramble and, you know, have to change it up a little bit. It's fine now, your bread will be on the shelves. But what it got me thinking about was, you know, sort of, I started thinking about our planning and our process in the town, and it's very similar. It's, you know, as a town, we have to do as much planning ahead, understand what we're doing, and then we have to implement it. And we've had some really good hires, and we've had the last, you know, a few hires have been very good, and we're heading in the right direction. But even with all that, you know, stuff happens. You know, like it did to me this morning in the bakery. Things aren't going to go the way you think they are. The result isn't going to be the way you think it is. And then the key then, at that point, is to adjust and do better and show up every day, you know, as employees and as, you know, as town servants, show up every day trying to do the right thing for the community. And I feel very fortunate, we have a lot of, you know, we're turning the corner that way. We have a lot of department heads and a lot of people who are trying to do the right thing in between a lot of very difficult issues. And so, you know, I think, you know, and there's, you know, we could name all of them. We talked a little bit about housing, and where do these employees live, and what do we do? We have to work on that. We talk about traffic. And we're going to spend 15, 16 million dollars on roundabouts. But we really, you know, I get concerned, are we just going to move the problem to the next corner? You know, we're going to move it into the downtown? And so, you know, we've got a project specialist who said, "Jeez, maybe we should be modeling all of this in doing that." So, you know, we're working the right direction. 40Bs, you know, I look, and we have an unfriendly one. We had a couple that were challenged, and it is a challenge. But I think that it's also an opportunity. I think that, you know, the value of the property and the ability for the developers to make money, but also not have to build it as densely and not, and be able to give more tiers of affordability and build something that looks like sort of Saichem's or Beech Plum, which came out really nicely. I think that, you know, everyone's up in arms and wants to stop it. And I've written back to every single neighbor who's, you know, told me how terrible it was, the end of the world, and told them, "You know what? We have to figure out how to do it in a way that works for us." What has kind of, this has been a really interesting year. I think there's been a shift. I think, you know, I'm the old dog on the board. I've been around a while. I was part of the planning processes 20, 25 years ago. And one of the things that a lot of the islanders didn't like in the comprehensive plan was the talk of limitations, the talk that there was limits, and that was, you know, those things, you'd have to say no to people. They didn't like some of those topics. But now we get 20 years out, and, you know, the projections that were made back in those days about Old South Road and those places, well, they've turned out to be true, and they came true quicker. And so I think, all of a sudden, I think what's happened is the islanders who had thought that building this out as fast as they could, you know, the market will take care of it, all of a sudden, there's been a change of heart on the island. A lot of the longtime residents are sitting there saying, "Well, wait a minute, do we really want to do this? And what is our quality of life going to be? Do I want to be in traffic for two hours?" And I, you can just sense it. And there's, you know, a change that wasn't there five years ago. The island is under pressure, we're under increasing pressure. It used to be just the summer season and, you know, and, you know, a few rich individuals would come in and, but now, come in and invest. Now we're under pressure by hedge funds and investment groups and other things are buying the houses and doing the projects for returns. And, you know, it's a whole different pressure than we're used to. And I think, again, we're back to what I talked at the beginning. We need to plan, and we need to know what we're up against. You know, an example of that is the marijuana laws. We've got, you know, the state voted it, we've been struggling with what's the right thing to do. You know, there was some of us who thought we shouldn't do it at all, it's not family-friendly, there's others that said it was voted. And I think, you know, I think what we've came about as a board is to say, we should do it because it was embraced, but we should do it slowly. It's easier to let the reins out than it is to try to pull the reins back in. But we have, but we've kind of understood that this isn't, you know, this is gonna be an economic groundswell for marijuana. There's gonna be large companies that are gonna wanna buy the little companies that start. It, there's, it's gonna be different than we thought, so we have to be aware and, and prepare for it. I think, so, and I was supposed to talk about transportation, and I wasn't prepared, so I didn't. But I have one, I have one question. Of all, of all of us here in the room, and be honest, answer me honestly, who took the bus, walked, or took a bicycle here today? One, two, three, four. Yeah, it's about ten percent maybe, eight percent of the room, ten percent of the room. I think what we, what we need to do, i- if, you know, the town, the, the island is gonna continue to grow, it's still, as long as the beaches are, are nice, it's still gonna be popular. We need to find a way, you know, if, if it's gonna be a place you wanna live, we need to find a way to make that ten percent into forty or fifty percent. And we, you know, and we're working on using demand manager principles downtown for the parking. So some cars that park here all day long, six, eight, ten hours a day, so hopefully we have less of that. Or if it does happen, we're making money from it. We want people to come in for an hour or two, but we need turnover. And the people that live down here know the pressure that's on their neighborhoods. We need some way to give those people priority in their neighborhoods. But again, you know, that's, it's gonna be a difficult task, but we're working on that. And I think as an, as a community, and Jason and I talk a lot about this, we have to change the mindset of, it, well, it's such a car-centric mindset. This time of year, the weather's nice, the buses are great, we need to find a way that more people are busing and biking safely, and doing those, and walking. We need to get cars and things off the sidewalks and just, you know, sort of common sense, make it possible to move around the island without having a single occupancy vehicle. And, and so, and, and back to the comp plan days, with the guy that's, the consultant that said we would be overwhelmed on Old South Road, and at Fairgrounds Road and Surfside, and it would be a mess there. I asked him, and he didn't really wanna predict, but I asked him back then, what's gonna happen if we use traditional traffic methods? What if we just do what everyone else does? He said, well, eventually we'll close, you know, a street downtown, probably Main Street or Federal Street, probably start with Federal. Then we'll have to close a couple more because the adjacent streets will be busier. And eventually, those will be so busy that you'll have to pick one road, like Orange Street or Washington Street, and that'll only be for taxis and buses. So that's where we're heading if we do what everyone else in the world has done. You know, use traditional methods and try to move more cars more quickly. So I think our goal as a community has to shift. We have to say, because we're fortunate, the time of year that we have our worst traffic is when it's really nice. It's nice to bike, it's nice to walk. And so if we could find a way to get that mindset shifted, so the visitors don't need to bring their cars, and they don't use them as often, so all of us don't use them as often, if, if it's, the change has to start with us. And so I think if we can, you know, as a community, come together and do that, then we can add some more people, because it's gonna happen anyway, but it's still gonna be a really nice place if they wanna live. And I'm sure there'll be tons of questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again for the opportunity to be here, we really do appreciate it. For those of you who are on the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers and the Nantucket Community Association, some of my items are, this'll be the third time now that you've heard it, so try not to groan out loud. I've tried to brief it up a little bit. Wanted to just mention some of our current pending recently completed bigger projects and initiatives that town administration and other departments and the board has been working on. At the 2018 Annual Town Meeting, for those of you who might not have closely followed it, we adopted for this current fiscal year, fiscal 2019, a general fund budget of eighty-two point two million. We have enterprise fund budgets totaling forty-three point eight million. We appropriated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for health and human services groups. We appropriated seven point five million dollars in general fund capital, thirty-four point two million in enterprise fund capital. And, and we have some larger capital items that went to a ballot. All of them passed town meeting and the ballot with the exception of one, which was improvements to the Old South Road corridor. That passed a town meeting, failed at the ballot. That was a fourteen million dollar project, which is coming back at a special town meeting in October, broken into two projects. We approved design funds for the DPW redesign of the Department of Public Works facility of two point three million. We approved a renovation of the Marine Department of three point four five million, that is offset with a one million dollar grant from the state. We approved three point five million in stormwater improvements, and about a million in improvements to the Sparks Avenue sidewalk from the school to the Mid-Island Roundabout. We approved community preservation committee projects of two point five million, and those funds, as you probably know, go towards housing, affordable housing, open space and recreation, and historic preservation. We also approved, at the, at a special town meeting in November of 2017, we approved a tax on marijuana sales. And at the annual town meeting, we voted to dedicate, that was a three percent tax, we voted to dedicate half of that tax to substance abuse programs. There was a thirty million dollar citizen-sponsored general override that was put forward at town meeting, which did not pass. There were twenty-one zoning articles and nine home rule petitions, including the change of name of the Board of Selectmen, now Select Board, which the board had actually already done through a vote earlier, towards the end of 2017. At the October tenth special town meeting that is currently scheduled, we are going to be discussing bylaws, general bylaw and zoning bylaw changes to marijuana licensing and establishments. We have a moratorium in effect right now, as you probably know, through the end of this year, through the end of 2018. And it seems like every week, the board is talking about marijuana establishments. We have one medical marijuana dispensary that is licensed and, and ready to open, although they have not opened yet. They are in now for a recreational use to be approved, although they can't actually do that till the moratorium is lifted. And we're in the process of negotiating what's called a host community agreement with that group. Another group has been given by the town what's called a letter of non-opposition for another medical dispensary. However, they have not proceeded any further, and there's been a change in their location, and they have not yet been back to the board. And there are two or three groups that are pending, that have not made it entirely to the board yet. So lots of marijuana talk happens. At the, at the special, we're also doing, I mentioned the Old South Road improvements, that's two articles split from the Old South Road corridor item that passed at the town meeting, failed at the ballot. And that will be split into milestone road improvements and Old South Road improvements. And we're gonna be having some more discussion at upcoming board meetings about that. We have a number of sewer projects going on, some of them have stopped for the summer. We have our Nantucket Harbor Shimo Plus Sewer Extension Project, that has stopped for the summer. We have upgrades going on at the treatment plant. The C Street Pump Station is undergoing a renovation and upgrade, that, that work is ongoing now. And the Sconset Sewer System is going to be having a, a total evaluation sometime in the next few months, or that process will start in the next few months. We have a number of plans underway. Jason mentioned the strategic plan, that has been a major initiative. Rita mentioned the coastal resiliency plan, that's a major initiative as well. Tied into the coastal resiliency plan, where, where what will be eventually tied in is a dredge plan and a hazard mitigation plan update. Rita mentioned water quality. Other general things include a staffing study that's underway town-wide, cable TV license renewal. We've completed collective bargaining for almost all of our unions. And last fall, we implemented health insurance plan design changes, which is intended to save the town some money. We have a number of ongoing projects, I won't go into them all except just to mention them, the Tank Farm relocation from downtown, Harbor Place redevelopment, Our Island Home, the Richmond Development is, is something that comes before us from time to time, and it's before planning more and more often. Paid parking, as Matt mentioned, is something underway, or actually, you didn't mention that, but that is underway. We, through the assistance of Remain, we have a consultant that is working with town staff to develop a plan to implement paid parking in 2020? Uh, let's see, what else? We have a number of personnel changes that have, have happened since we talked to you last year, including our public outreach coordinator, culture and tourism director, island home administrator. We have a new chief technology officer, that's a new position, labor relations director. We are hoping to hire a real estate specialist. Some of the items that Matt mentioned are things like, a lot of real estate issues come before the board, and we don't necessarily have the capacity to dig deep into them as we should be doing. So the idea is that a real estate specialist with hopefully a legal background could help us out with that. Open meeting law and public records compliance has become more of a regulated area by the state, and we need staff resources to help administer those things. We're, we've worked very hard on our public outreach efforts. Town manager, I, I have an e-newsletter that goes out about once a month, prepared by our public outreach coordinator. We, I try to do a weekly radio synopsis of what happened at the board meeting on Thursday mornings, as well as a, a kind of a cable TV show with Gino on Channel ninety-nine. We also have social media platforms on Twitter and Instagram. Our town website is about to be overhauled, and I give the board a monthly report of town management activities at its meeting. So we're really trying to get out a lot. Okay. I probably am talking too long. I just wanted to mention then, one, one last thing. We've gotten a lot of complaints this year about noise. And I wanna mention, in, in case people are wondering, construction noise is not banned during the summer unless there is a restriction through a planning board or zoning board of appeal special permit. Noise is allowed after seven AM, Monday through Saturday, and after ten AM on Sunday. Between June fifteenth and September fifteenth, it's allowed after seven thirty AM. So we, again, we've gotten a lot of complaints this summer from people who live next door to construction activities. And I'm sure it is quite annoying, but that is what our bylaw says right now. The other thing about noise is if you are experiencing not even construction noise, but sort of like neighborhood noise after ten o'clock at night, please call the Nantucket Police Department. You, you are free to call town administration, but there is nothing we can do about that the next day. It needs to get logged in and recorded so that we can have a document, documentation of what the complaint was about. Public service announcement. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Let's give my hand.
Now, I am live, but it's very hard to pass this back and forth. I'm gonna ask, until we get the mic done. Whatever, no, it's not done yet. Hello, is it?
They have to speak loudly until they get a battery.
Okay, okay. So those who have louder voices, let's make you the first and the questioning.
We, we can always repeat the question in the microphone as well for the camera.
Thank you, thank you. So, first question. Right here. You.
Okay. Hi, I just want to applaud what you're doing, and I think your, your three priorities are right on, and it makes me feel so much more comfortable as a homeowner here. But one of the things that I know, it sounds pretty real light and everything else, I mean, if you guys are gonna connect up the bike, bike paths on the other side of Prospect, I'm just wondering what's happening with that project.
So the question is, the bike connections on the other side of Prospect? Do you mean?
Just on Prospect.
Yeah.
Kind of where, where it ends?
Yeah.
And then? Actually, I don't know where that is right now, do you know, Libby?
I believe it's in the design phase, but our transportation planner is here, perhaps he could elaborate on that, Mike? Could you? And could you just maybe reiterate what the connection is?
From the end of the Prospect Street path now, which is kind of just west of the mill, to essentially Joy Street and Mount Garnet Street. And then there'll be a share of the road, essentially along Mount Vernon to Mary Ellen and the Mill Street path.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Scissor from the Backstreet, and Mr. Fee gave me my signal to come in. He said, as long as the beach is, the nice people will come. My concern is probably one concern that most people hear, it concerns families with small children and grandchildren, grandchildren. And it concerns the particular beach. As you know, small, families with small children and grandchildren like to get a beach sticker. They drive on, they pay a few hundred bucks for this sticker. And they like to go to the North Shore to be safe, they don't wanna take their little kids out to surf stuff. And the North Shore is kind of limited to the Forty Pole and Hill Point. And right now, Hill Point, which is either the end of Hill Point Road or the one that goes around. Now, there's a big sign on it about warning, soft sand. There's a town, Nantucket, sign on it about emergency beach access number forty-seven, forty-nine. There's a town sign about, about emergencies. People love that beach. It's sort of the overflow for the Forty Pole. Forty Pole can't take all the business it's getting now, because there was some erosion that's made a little lagoon in the middle, so it's very hot, it's very hot, more than a hundred cars. So yesterday, there was sixty cars at four o'clock at Forty Pole. And they had to go through a puddle of two feet high. Now, in the end, several cows were stopped, several were disabled, John Allen Ford got a lot of business out of it. There's a lot of cows that they had to damage, because you couldn't tell how deep the puddle on the road was at Forty, no, I mean, Hill Point, sorry. So there have been a lot of calls, I talked to a lot of families yesterday about these sixty cars, I mean, it's very, very hot. They're very confused about the situation. They're getting, it's six feet, they, myself, I get the next signals from Landang Conservation Foundation, the DPW, the town, and the town manager's office. Myself, I had called, I'm here with me of the Conservation Foundation, and she said that this huge puddle, which is disabled on cars, is a real safety concern because of this emergency access. And if a car happens, we stop in this ditch, an emergency vehicle can't get through, or congress, like, you can't work in the vehicle, it's stuck. And at the time you back up, you get all the way down to Forty Pole to get on the beach and strike the restricted company, attraction, and that. So the Conservation Foundation lady here is looking at the marsh toward the beach side is conservation land, but the ditch with rock, it belongs to the town. So my question is, would you please look into this and solve it so that the families that are depending on the North Shore, drive lines, who have lost tickets, will be able to access it? Thank you very much.
Yes, we will look into it, this is the first time I've heard about it, so we'll talk to DPW.
Thank you.
Try to get it figured out.
I went out, tried to go out fishing about two weeks ago with my daughter, and saw that puddle, and I, I said, and I have my Jeep, and I'm thinking, I'm not gonna go through that, I'm glad I didn't. Now that I listened to you. But it'd be good to know they're gonna look at it. But, but the other thing to think about, and, and is, you know, I, when I grew up, the guys, guys used to bring their shotguns to school, and they put them outside the principal's office. Can you imagine that today? They'd show up at school late and put the shotgun next to the principal. You know, right now... You know, right now, they'd, they'd go to jail. Uh, but, but things that we've done and been able to do, you know, as we get busier, you know, as there's more pressure, we may not be able to do anymore. We can't bring our shotguns to school, you can't go hunting because we sold all the land. We may not be able to park, you know, on the beaches forever at the lim, at the numbers we're parking at. It's not, you know, it, it's unfortunate, but we're doing it to ourselves. So, you know, so if we wanna continue to have those rights, then we need to, you know, we need to actually think about them and plan for them so that we, people can still enjoy that in those places. So, anyway.
Thanks, Eric. Yes?
Um, hi, Scott Wilson. Um, the Old South Road imperforement, they passed at the special town meeting, do they have to go back to ballot?
Yes, so the question was if the Old South, uh, warrant articles, the special town meeting, they pass, won't go to a ballot? Yes, so it passes at town meeting and then we have to vote on for the appropriation.
Um, are there any, uh, awareness sessions or, uh, information sessions or plans that describe that? And is there anywhere where you go to see sort of some of the detail of what those plans are, a lot of the town meeting problems, past companies, sort of a lack of depth information?
Yep. We, we all agree there needs to be better visualization and I know there, we are planning on doing public forums and having different information sessions like we've done on the roundabouts or South Beach Street. I think it's kinda, we're trying to kinda incorporate that into any project like this. I don't have any dates. Do you have any? Nothing, nothing yet, Mike? No, that's in the process. And we, we've asked for it at the board level and town administration and, you know, we all agreed after that meeting, like, wow, we need better visuals because it is complicated. But we have a drone now that gives us better aerials and so we're, we're, I think it's gonna be happening. Mike, do you wanna add anything at all?
Just as a last, I had a get to the project of, uh, you simply have a search engine, uh, Old South Road forum study, uh, that'll, 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 all information on all projects that's planning and planning development.
Thank you.
Ron? He'll bring you the microphone.
Fourteen million dollars in warrant, it was a town meeting this year. That warrant is for two traffic circles on the Old South Road to alleviate the traffic that's gonna be generated by all the building and development that's going there and could be up to a thousand cars or even more additionally added onto our streets. The article failed, but one of the reasons, one taxpayer got up and asked the question that, why should we as taxpayers be asked to spend fourteen million dollars to bail this developer out? He's putting, these figures may be a little different, maybe even correct, Madam. He's putting four million dollars into this development, taking two million dollars out, and they want us to put up four mi, uh, fourteen million to be, bails out of the mess that he's creating. Uh, it was voted down rather handily, as I remember, and I was surprised, let me mention now, it's coming up again at the town meeting. Maybe this is a chance to just give us a reason why we shouldn't vote against it again. Thank you. I think it's made me correct it.
Hi. A portion of that project is, um, some significant improvements to the existing milestone rotary and other improvements to Milestone Road as well. It's not just Old South and that's what we've split them into two. I don't know the exact dollar figures of the Old South versus, yeah, if someone can help me with that. But, um, Old South Road has already failed before Richmond put a shovel on the ground in terms of the traffic data. Mike can elaborate on that. But, um, in Richmond, um, I believe the figure that they're contributing to the improvements is actually three million dollars. They are also, as I alluded to earlier, getting us to a place where we will be at eight percent of the ten percent that we need that state mandated. So, I just, I think that there are, they're also developing some good commer, commercial options there that people in the, in the area will be able to walk to. And I just, I think that there are some, you know, significant benefits that we're gaining as well as, yes, potentially, more traffic.
I, I support the, the, I support the rotaries and I support the, some of the changes there because it may, it's gonna make biking and it's gonna make, uh, biking and walking safer to go across some of those areas, so I think that's important. I do think, uh, the, the idea of cost and who pays is, you know, is always, is an, is an issue. Uh, that development was, uh, granted sixty-five market rate lots. That was what the zoning change gave them. So, there is plenty of value that was given there. Uh, we're getting something, but we certainly have given something there. Uh, so, you know, I do think that's a question that, you know, that we need to have more in front of our minds as we go forward. Uh, it, and that, the plans from twenty-five years ago said it would fail and it didn't even count the Richmond increase and all the other increases. So, you know, so we do have to look at some of these and decide, do we wanna be building, you know, Route one forty-nine on Old South Road? Do we want that on Surfside? You know, if we don't, then we do have to bite the bullet and make some, you know, substantial changes to our, how we do things. You know, so you can't, you know, everyone can't, and, and people say, well, it's not fair, how are the poor people, you know, how are the poor people gonna, they need a job, they need a car. They're really poor, people don't have cars. You know, so I, so I think, you know, we have to start, we have to shift how we do things here, uh, way more than we have.
One, one important piece that I don't think has been mentioned this morning is that as of this year, we have instituted a year-round bus service route, which we hope will, you know, really give people the ability to not rely on a car to get to work and to get to, to school and other, other, other things throughout the year.
Bruce. Bruce, oh, Bruce. Here we go, we got, the microphone is not working. To follow through on the previous comments, has the deal been struck with Richmond that it cannot be changed? Therefore, what we're really saying is it's an all or nothing, you have to pass the appropriation for the, for the road or you don't get it. Because Richmond has signed a contract to give three million dollars.
No, the, it, the deal, the Richmond deal is done. I mean, what is done is done and that, and that isn't going to change. What's gonna happen there over time is gonna happen there. I think it's important that we, you know, sort of learn from that and learn going forward.
I don't think that their three million dollar con, contribution hinges on us doing additional improvements. They, they'll do the three million on the portion that they, they've agreed to do.
Which sounds like people wanna do.
Yeah, the, the answer to that is the, the voters still have the ultimate say. They can go to town meeting and say no, or they can go to the, they can go to the ballot box and say no, if they don't want to see this happen. I do, I think it would be a mistake to do that and I think since it's happening in the fall town meeting, my guess is, you know, we all just had a taste of what August is gonna be like over the Fourth of July week and it was awful. And I think that by the time we get to fall town meeting, we're gonna have six weeks of August that are gonna be awful. And by then, I have a feeling the voters are just gonna vote for this, is gonna, are vote, gonna vote this through. I hope that we do the modeling and we understand the impacts elsewhere because that will swing some votes. I hope that, you know, the people that, like myself or, or Jason that care about bike safety and walking, I hope that those people stand up strongly at the town meeting so this passes, you know, but I do think, you know, we have to take a hard look at some of this stuff.
Hi, Ken Gennner, and, uh, I'm the chair of the Noshop Homeowners Association and I've got two topics I'd like to cover. One, because I think that there's an awful lot of, um, angst being expressed in the room over these Old South Road improvements. I wanna credit Mike Burns and also the Nantucket, uh, Planning and Economic Development Commission because they're doing this work. It's late, I wish it were sooner. Dawn is completely correct, Old South Road and a few others have failed just because of the baseline growth on Nantucket, not because of these new projects. These new projects haven't come on stream yet to really impact traffic the way they will. And I believe, Mike, that the projections from the traffic studies on Old South are that, uh, uh, increase from Richmond, one fully implemented, which I happen to think is gonna take closer to ten years before they're all built out, but that's gonna be about a twenty-five percent increase in the load. I'm just ballparking or remembering from last meetings, but it's about a twenty-five percent increase in traffic along Old South. And they do look, they have looked with those traffic studies and what Mike is doing, uh, beyond Old South Road, you know, uh, two dozen, almost, I'll bet now, intersections that you're looking at with those traffic studies. So, um, to vote these things down is a classic case of cutting off your nose despite your face because the problem is with us whether you vote for it or against it. Uh, I'd like to now turn to kind of a shocking number that I heard mentioned, which is two to four marijuana outlets in the works, uh, in addition to the two really that have already made themselves known. And the concern that, uh, you're trying to balance, I realize, is, uh, community impact relative to citing where to put them. And, uh, I don't know much about the regulations, but I'm learning. And I understand that the non-opposition letters and the community host agreements are a key part of the approval process. And our concern, living along Old South as we do, is that because of the zoning, which is commercial neighborhood, I believe, uh, these things have to be in CN zone and they, um, cannot be within five hundred feet by statute of schools or places where children commonly congregate. And I think that's actually the language. And, and so what I really don't wanna see is under the umbrella provided by, oh, well, that's where the CN zoning is. I don't wanna see Old South turned into a, a pot corridor or a pot ghetto because that's exactly where I think it's heading. And I don't think that that's the correct thing to do and, uh, certainly it has, uh, an impact on our communities. There are a hundred and eighty-five schoolchildren who are in the Nantucket schools who get picked up by the buses every day to be brought to school along Old South. And so I would say that that's a place where children commonly congregate. So, I just hope that when you're reviewing these non-opposition letter proposals and in particular in the one that is a site change, that you keep those things in mind. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a couple of notes on that. Um, the zoning that has been passed currently for, after the moratorium for recreational marijuana is CN and also CI. Um, and the current, um, facility that's the closest to moving towards getting a license for recreational is located on Amelia Drive. I have heard the possibility of one looking at an Old South property and two others looking at property out on Arrowhead Drive. What we have proposed as a board for the special town meeting in the fall is, um, and we went back and forth and round and round on this, do we propose a ban? Do we propose a limit? Do we do nothing? What other types of regulations, licensing, so forth? So, we're doing additional provisions into the zoning regulations to address everything, licensing provisions, but we have also proposed a limitation. And what we're allowed to propose that can be done at town meeting is a limitation of two establishments. And that's what I think we all support at this time and are bringing forward to, as Matt said, keep it a little more reined in, um, and see how it goes.
Of course. Just to follow up on that, um, it would seem to me it would be helpful if the select board could, uh, somehow project their views on where these establishments ought to be with a little bit more detail or granularity. The situation we're dealing with is right on Old South Road, right on the road, directly across from Noshop, and directly behind it will be the two hundred and forty units that the Richmond people are gonna be developing. And it just seems to me if you would say something like, gee, maybe they ought to be sort of tucked back down on Amelia or Lover's Lane or something, out of sight, it would be really helpful for the children of the community who won't have to stare at it every day as they're on their bus or waiting for the bus on Old South Road. Thank you.
One thought is, uh, the children won't even know they're there because there's very controlled branding on, not just the packaging, but the buildings. You can't have a residential component to the building, nothing could be attached to it, it's, it's commercial. Uh, the state has been very strict on signage, so I don't think you're gonna know it's there. Um, there's gonna be more liquor stores on Old South Road than there is in, you know, marijuana shops. So, I don't think you'll notice the actual building. I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but it's not. Sometimes we have these visions of, you know, a giant marijuana leaf, a thirty-foot, you know, sign outside, but it will be controlled.
Yeah, in my youth, I spent some, some winters out in Aspen and Telluride, out in that direction. So, some of the things that the state did and that we did is learned from their mistakes. Uh, they, they didn't put them in the specific areas, so they ended up everywhere. They don't have the same stringent sign standards we have, so they had, they were having these huge signs that people put up, uh, and then they lim, they said, well, you can't do that with a pot shop. So, what people out, out in Aspen did, they would just call, you know, they would have, you know, Matt's hamburger shop with a huge sign and everyone knew that the hamburger shop had the pot next door. So, we, you know, so we've had, so we've made changes to address that kinda stuff. And I think it is gonna be fairly, and I was probably one of the more vocal in opposition to this, I, you know, but I, you know, I sort of, I see the, I see the direction it's going. Uh, and so I think that we are taking a pretty strict stance on this. I don't think, you know, there'll be a couple and the only, you know, if you had to predict a problem, I, the only problem we might have is we might have a lines. You know, if this is as popular as I think it is, the spreadsheet we got the other night, uh, the math, we did the math when they were talking about it, if, you know, in year one, they're projecting about three million in sales. By year three or four, they're projecting, projected between seven and eight. If there are two businesses, that rings true because they're doing between two and three million dollars average out in Aspen. There's like seven or eight of them, maybe there's ten now, uh, and they're saying they have too many. They're saying for that size community, which is similar to us, maybe they're a little bigger, they're, they're saying they have a few too many out there already. So, I think we're sort of, I think we're heading to a good place. Uh, this was the first year out there where they sold, where the amount of tax, amount of pot sold was more than the amount of liquor sold. So, there was a shift. It was, you know, they hit, and it wasn't liquor in every restaurant, but it was liquor in the, you know, in the, yeah, in the stores. And it was, so they, they made a, a shift out there. So, it's very, you know, this is something that's happening and it's coming and, you know, we just have to be as prepared for it as possible. One of the concerns is it's not, you know, the pot that, you know, some of you remember from your youth, but, or that I'm supposed to remember, uh, which I think, no comment. But it's a lot different, it's a lot stronger and some of the ways these kids take it, it's, it's a lot stronger. And so I, you know, I think there are gonna be some issues that we don't expect. There was, a buddy of mine had a young female at his house, you know, his, his son was home and she, he said, oh, I don't drink, I don't drink. And fifteen minutes later, she was comatose and they almost had to call a, call the ambulance. And, right, your parents came and she was twenty, twenty-one, parents came and got her and it was some sort of vape pen with whatever that someone had gave her, blah, blah, blah. She was done, she was done. And so I do think that it's gonna, there's gonna be some things that we don't expect, you know, and again, back to what I said before, we have to be prepared and address those. There're gonna be challenges, but I feel confident that the police department and the social services will tackle those if we have to.
I also just wanna follow up, sorry, very quickly.
I'm sorry, wait.
Oh, no problem at all. Just, um, we had the head of the Cannabis Control Commission here for one of our events and, uh, I also attended an event over on the vineyard with the Cannabis Control Commission, two of the commissioners there. And they've made it very clear that with the branding, the marketing, again, in the packaging and in the stores, that they do not want anyone to know what it is on the outside of the store or really what you are. The packagers are very childproof. Um, and, and that is something that has definitely been, um, at the forefront when we're discussing this is the impact on the community and the children and making sure that, uh, we really minimize and mitigate that. Um, and, and I think so, just a sort of personal note, um, having gone to university in Canada where the drinking age was eighteen and then living in Europe for six years, that I think being, um, an active part in, um, making sure that everyone is using, understands and use, uh,
an active part in making sure that everyone is using, understands and use, uses marijuana responsibly. You know, the difference that I experienced on college campuses in other countries versus some of the college campuses here with liquor, I don't know that, you know, I think we can always do better with making sure that kids understand social, responsible use, so.
Thank you. More questions? It's right there.
Hi. This is a Smith Point issue, but it's a simple one. It's a very small one. There's a beach on Massachusetts Avenue, which is a town beach. And I hate to bring it up because it's, not too many people know about it. But it's increasingly being used during the day by families and at night by people who come to see the sunset. There's a building, a town building there. The building looks like it was built 100 years ago and never had anything improved on it. The big issue though is we need a garbage can. We need a town garbage can next to the building. We had it on and off over the last five years. We've had a garbage can. The town has picked up the garbage. This year, we don't have a garbage can. So it's a combination of, it would be wonderful if the town would spend one day reshingling and putting the windows in that building, which encourages people to be cleaner. It would be great if you put a garbage can there and came and picked up the garbage a couple of times a week. Right now, I live across the street, so myself and some of the other neighbors, we pick up the garbage. So I, I just, if Mr. McNeil was here, I'd probably ask him to do it, but I'm bringing it up with you. Thanks.
He is here. We, we can have a discussion about that, he and I, but just so people know, we, we do try to avoid putting out trash cans where we can. They tend to become dumpsters. People put their household trash in there. And it's not one, a couple of times a week that we have to go out there. Now it's every day and maybe sometimes twice a day. Seems like as soon as Public Works picks up the trash, somebody heaves all their household stuff in there. So it, it's a monitoring situation and it's, it's very difficult. That, that Shack will look into as well. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even sure we need that out there anymore, but we can discuss it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I'm all for fixing the shed, but I feel like as soon as we do that, we're going to get emails. Oh, my gosh, don't change the shed. We love that shed.
I don't know if this is the appropriate forum, but I am continually concerned about bicycles at night with no lights. I've taken this up with Kevin Marshall in years past. I've written letters to the editor. I don't know how you enforce this. I had an idea at one time that everyone would be ticketed who didn't have a light. And if they could prove, go into the station and prove that they had gotten a light, they'd get a partial refund. But I think it is so dangerous. And I see people going the wrong way on streets at night with no lights and you think, am I going to be the one to hit them?
I, I can't agree more. I think there's, enforcement would be one small part of it realistically. We'd be able to get some people to change the culture. As soon as you would give somebody a ticket, it would get around word of mouth pretty quick. I think there's things that we could do with Chamber of Commerce, getting grants from different, whether it's that from the state or a nonprofit, to give all the businesses access to lights, red in the back, you know, white up front. They could be charged with USB or they could be battery. There's lots of different options. And so all the businesses who have staff who ride at night, we just hand it to them. We make it really easy. So that, that could be one solution. I think there's, we could, at the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee I'm a part of, we could bring that up and maybe I'll get your email afterwards and we could talk about it. There's lots of things I think we can do that's not a huge change or doesn't cost $10 million. So thank you for bringing that up.
Bill Sherman of the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers, a group that's set up under a town code to represent the seasonal residents, the folks who pay taxes but don't have a vote at town meeting. That group was generally very positive about the decision of town meeting in April not to approve the Wickler proposal of a $30 million bond to allow projects to go forward more quickly on the island to solve problems that require a lot of funding. But the, the effort of Wickler to come forward to that raises in my mind at least two questions. One, does the town have any other mechanism available to speed up funding for all these, particularly the transportation projects, but other projects that require funding but are not planned until two, three, five years from now? That's one question. And two, is there a way that the town might sound out the seasonal residents? There's a question in my mind, do seasonal residents generally worry about seeing their taxes increased or considering how much they have at stake in the values of their homes? Are they more interested in seeing money spent as, as needed, done carefully, but spent to solve the town's transportation and other infrastructure problems? Thank you.
We could, we could pass the mic around on this one, but the first question is yes, budget overrides and debt exclusions. We can get 45 projects done next year if we disappropriate them and vote for them. I'll be, assuming we could implement all of them. So sometimes I've, I've, in my year and a half on the board, we have the money for certain things and it's just, you can't get it done fast enough. You can't find a vendor to do it, to come from off island. So I would say, yeah, we could do budget overrides and debt exclusions for 10 different projects, but would it pass at the, at the ballot? And then could we actually get them done in time? So that's the answer to the first question. Does anybody want to jump in on the second part?
Yes.
May I, may I just comment?
Yeah.
To raise, it's, sure, you have a latitude to raise money more rapidly, but it comes at the expense of taxes to be borne by the year-round residents and, and that's hard. My understanding is that raising taxes for the year-round residents is very, very a harsh way of dealing with the problem. The more or less beauty of the Wickler proposal is that it shifted the burden heavily onto seasonal residents. So that raises the question, should seasonal residents say, no, 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 don't raise our taxes to solve problems more rapidly? Or should we be saying to support our heavy investment in all our homes, should we be more willing to see a differential where seasonal residents bear a higher tax load?
Well, we, this, this year, we had the ability to go up to as much as a 35% residential exemption on year-round residents. And then there's a shift to the commercial properties. We did make an adjustment. We went from 20% to a 25%. Now, that's your year-round residence, only your primary residence, not any other properties. And we adjusted the, the commercial shift rate to try to not shift it onto, onto like your, onto your own businesses. So we do have the ability to go up to 35% to soften, soften things over time if we need to on the year-round tax base. But does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I've talked about the differential for years and we did make a slight change this year. But we, what we didn't want to do, we made sure that it was not a windfall to the islanders because then you go back and, and try to charge more and they're upset. So we kept their rates about the same. We, a lot of the islanders were only able to stay here because they're running a business or benefiting from a business. So we made sure that the impact didn't hit them. And you asked, should the seasonal residents be in favor? And I think they should be. And I think they are typically. And the examples, there are examples to give. We wouldn't have the land bank and some of the conservation we have unless it was the foresight of the seasonal residents that did that, you know, 30, 40 years ago. And that was against, that was against sort of, you know, the natives didn't want that. We wouldn't have Main Street the way it is now. I don't know how many people know this, but probably all of you, but Main Street, back, you know, 40 years ago, 50 years ago, there was a big argument. And the islanders wanted to pave Main Street, all of the natives, the year-rounders. We wanted to pave it. We saw that as progress. And the off-islanders mainly said, no, you can't pave Main Street. Are you guys crazy? You know, is, is that much inbreeding going on? And, and so there was the newspaper, the Inky was, at that point was in favor of, of paving Main Street. And they wrote regularly, pave Main Street, it's progress. And the, the off-islanders started a newspaper called The Cobble. And they ran that paper for a summer, summer and a half. And they finally beat some common sense into the natives to say no to paving Main Street. You know, I wish that had happened earlier because the downtown was paved from 56 Union to the top of Orange, all, you know, it was, was cobbled from the top of Union, top of Main Street, all the way to the, something natural. There was cobblestones in this entire core. You can still see the cobblestones in the top of Main Street on the right side in the, next to the, what do you call it? Next to the sidewalks. You can still see the cobblestones. What we did, they made, the cobblestones made a great base. A lot of the downtown is base of cobblestone when we tarred it. So I wish we had actually had that argument a few years earlier and the entire downtown was still cobblestones. But we did learn.
That was a good bit of history for us. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Longecker. I'm glad Mr. McNeil is here. I wanted to publicly thank the DPW for the lane changes out at the dump. It's fantastic. He must be a genius because that's exactly what I would have done. So I have two questions. One is perhaps the board or Mr. McNeil could speak about any proposed changes for the Take It or Leave It area. I've, I've heard rumors that there are plans, so I'd like to know more about them. And the other question is about the Indian Trail along Orange Street and Union. That seems to have disappeared. And it's my understanding that the town has rights to that and I'd like to see that restored
I don't know about any changes to the Take It or Leave It. Rob could potentially address that if he knows of any. And I'm not sure what Indian Trail you are talking about.
If you're not old enough, perhaps. It ran along the block. It was sort of like, you know, the trail in Spotsen. It was a trail running back along the side of the farm.
Is it different from the railroad?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't know anything about that.
And also, oh, Rob, you've got a microphone. Go ahead.
Thank you for that paid advertisement. Specific to the Take It or Leave It, I'd just say that most of the changes that we've implemented recently at the landfill to address traffic concerns have sort of been implemented in a way that we can see the change and react to the human behavior that's happening so that we can make sure that it's being done properly. And so the Take It or Leave It is an integral part of that operation, but it is quite secondary to the primary goal of the drop off for solid waste and recyclables. So the, the long-term plan there would be to enhance and expand the experience and the facility for Take It or Leave It, but it would be done sort of completely inside the fenced area where Take It or Leave It parking would be hopefully behind the existing structure. So the, the entire front parking lot would be dedicated to solid waste and recycling drop off. And the Take It or Leave It experience would be somewhat separate behind the fence itself. Again, these are all things that we're doing with low cost or no cost and, and sort of experimenting as we go here before we fundamentally design and, and incorporate final capital projects here. So thank you.
Libby, I have a, two questions for you. One, can you give us an indication of the situation in that Harbor Place, Wilkes Square? Is it Harbor Place there? Timeframe and allied with that, what is the timeframe for the tank farm to be moved?
The tank farm is in the process of getting permitted now. And I think their timeframe is to have it up and running by somewhere around 2020, if not earlier. And end of 2019 possibly. But redevelopment of Harbor Place is a discussion that's underway now. Most of this has been very public. We have been given funds from what we call the owners group. There are three owners of that property, National Grade, Nantucket Island Resorts and Winthrop Associates. And they gave the town $70,000 to engage a consultant to do a transporta-, intermodal transportation feasibility study last fall. And we are just about probably at the end of that contract. They've made some different presentations to the group. These have all been public posted meetings. And we're sort of talking about internally about how to proceed from there. There was some discussion earlier this year about whether or not we would put the matter on the special town meeting. And in the end, it was decided that there's simply not enough information out there for the public yet on that. And we have internal meetings going on with the owners as to what the development might look like and what the town might want to get out of it. They've, they've been discussing with us what the benefits might be. They're, they would prob-, I don't think any of this is secret, but I think they would like to see a zoning change down there. And that's under discussion as well and what the town might be able to have basically for that. And that, of course, requires a town meeting vote. And I don't, I, I think right now there's, there's just continued discussion about it. So I'm not quite sure about the timing. I don't know if any, there's a couple of board, other board members. Jim has been involved in this maybe as much as anybody and I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything about it, but I think it's an ongoing discussion.
Thank you. I think we have reached the magic hour. I want to thank our select board members and Libby for once again giving us a very candid and open explanation of what is happening in the town and answering the questions that you have raised. I want to thank, in addition to the stage, I want to thank the floor for the questions. And in fact, for coming. We're very happy to have had you in this, in this hall with us. And I do want finally to give a little plug again for National Community Television and Channel 18. And to tell you that they have been filming and they will be stopping shortly, that filming. But in the past, they have run it during the, the preceding year. And if you watch it, you might see you. Thanks very much.